Safe as possible. With that, are there any questions from the board for Mr. Keys or Mr. Gannon?
Hey President Dan, it's Joe.
Yes, Joe.
I do have a question and it's either, thank you gentlemen for the presentation, very well put together, pretty concise. Couple of questions though. The first thing about, I know what's happening with the organization I work, you know, total shutdown, all the branches were shut down. In the community I work, libraries are closing down, stores are closing down. And we deal specifically with one of the largest medical centers in Albany and the warnings are dire. Also, public health particularly. So first of all, you know, I think Rich, you had indicated you said that the vaccinations, it's kind of muddy. It's my understanding, again, maybe incorrect, but I understand Warren County has absolutely no vaccinations at this point. And we're not sure when we're going to get them. And then the second question, just wondered, you know, you would indicated, you know, you always listen to public health, Department of Public Health. What are their recommendations? Are there recommendations to stay open? Because you indicate from the school's perspective. But what is public health? Who are the experts in this? The science? What are their recommendations, if any?
Rich, do you want to first?
Go ahead.
You want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
So when, in speaking with public health, there's, there's, there's a couple of different perspectives, I think, that you would want to take into consideration. One is the, the availability of having staffing. The holidays were certainly something that we're going to, we anticipated and we were right in terms of the increase in the, the number of cases that we saw. But the majority of the cases that, that we, that we endured were from household exposures from over the holidays. And a good number of the cases that we've been dealing with that have involved contact tracing have been as a result of further exposure, leading to positive cases within the same house. So you know, you're, you're really weighing the work that's going to be required in relation to the contact tracing to the value of remaining open and having that in-person instruction. And you know, there've been some, there've been some long days along the road, but if it's, if it's for the benefit of maintaining that, that direct contact with students, ensuring that they're coming to school, they're, they're being fed, they're being looked after, I, I think those, those certainly outweigh some of the others. And, and, and public health will tell you that, you know, the, the contact tracing initiative is, is a burden for them. They're, they're understaffed, they're overworked. As much as I've worked in the last couple of weeks, it pales in comparison to the work that Patty Belden and Janelle Jones and their staffs are doing. Certainly. But when we confer with, with Dr. Leonard, we've been able to ensure that, you know, school is, is a safe place. And, and our record kind of shows that. One of the things that you really can't predict, but I think we've, we tried to take into consideration is the impact that it would have on the community in relation to daycare for some of our younger students and a large majority of our families. Is where would those students go when those family, when those parents still have to report to work every day?
Hey Rich, it's, it's Joe. Thank you. I hate to interrupt.
Yeah.
I understand where you're going with that too. But the thing is, I think we're getting off on a tangent on this. My question was, did public health make a recommendation and do we trust the science rather than, well, we think the kids would be better off. I guess my point is, it's always been said, the science has always said, the kids or the students are not so much affected, or if they are, they have a higher degree of resistance to it or quicker recovery. But like, I think to Mr. Gannon's point where he said, one of the concern is in the staffing. I guess that's my concern or my question. And what did public health, I know you said the, the school doctor, but does public health make a recommendation and do we, or does the school take it?
So I think, Joe, that's a great question that you ask. I think public health, you know, the contact tracing has become overwhelming. There's no doubt about it. And working with Pat and working with Janelle and hearing them. And I think that it, you know, they believe it probably would help them if we went remote, truthfully. You know, our, our medical director is not making that recommendation. And that's what we have a medical director for. And we, as a group of superintendents, met yesterday in Warren County. And they have us looking right now at the vaccination process. So that's what Janelle had asked us to see if our nurses would be willing to do the vaccinations at our place. So that has, that's the immediate piece right now.
To, to elaborate on that, Joe, I, I think, you know, public health from the contact tracing piece, had, we, we have had discussions about going fully remote. They have not said, you know, flat out to go remote by any means, you know, and then our medical director has, has said that he believes it, that school is safe to be open and, and recommends that we, that we remain open.
Part of the concept that we're hearing from the medical crew, Joe, is we're hearing, they, they actually agree with us in the fact that if we're open, we are potentially mitigating the spread. That, you know, students aren't being put in houses together with lots of groups and they're coming to school, they're six feet apart, they're masked. And, and we know school is the safest place to be right now.
For the students?
For the students and the staff.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe. Any other questions from the board? Kathy, Rachel?
Um, I'm just curious, have we, um, with the little guys, with our younger students, have we eased up on masks, mask breaks? Excuse me. Or are you still doing that in the course of a day?
Yeah. So basically, Dr. Leonard asked that we really not have mask breaks anymore. So that was what we put out to the principals. Denise actually corresponded with the principals. Right before vacation ended, they, they really said, no more mask breaks. And when they finished eating their lunch, put their mask on. So before, you know, sometimes kids would finish eating their lunch and they would take a little, not anymore. The masks are back on and, you know, in all of the buildings, that's the gold standard are masks all the time.
Thanks. Kathy, anybody else? Fran, were you raising your hand or no? Okay. Okay, if, we can move on. Thank you, guys, for the report on the COVID. The next presentation, when I saw that this was coming up, I couldn't have been more pleased to, to hear about the work that Mr. Jones and Mrs. Sipowicz were doing. I'm anxious to hear their presentation. This, you know, time that we've been back in school has been stressful. As everyone knows, on, everyone, students and faculty, staff, everyone. And so sometimes it can be overwhelming and I'm going to appreciate that you may need a break. So some of the things that are available for our staff, I believe, is what we're going to talk about. So, Mr. Jones and Mrs. Sipowicz, thank you.
Good evening. I'm just going to share my screen. Mr. Jones, are you out there?
Yes, I'm all set.
All set.
Thank you, Mr. Gannon, Board of Education. One, for, for the opportunity for this undertaking and two, for the opportunity to talk about what we're going to be discussing this evening in regards to the Q Care's peer support program that we put together here for Queensberry High School. A little bit of background and history regarding this is, as an athletic trainer, there is a, an AT's care program, very similar, based almost entirely on the same groundwork and framework that I created the Q Care's program for. And that's strictly a peer support program from the rationale standpoint, that is aimed at offering crisis and/or support to individuals having difficulty, whether it be at home and school or otherwise. In order to best be able to support the teachers so that they in turn can turn around and support our, our prized possessions, our students. When I embarked on this journey, I, I interviewed Denise and then I said, how can we expect our staff to take care of our students in a, in a manner if we're having difficulty taking care of each other? So this was the goal at hand, is to get staff to be able to support each other and then ultimately just be good human beings. Next slide.
So I'm jumping in because the Q Care's program aligns with our Board of Education goal in number three, which fosters safety, empathy and wellness for the school community. But taking care of our students is the priority, like Mr. Jones said. And in order to do so, we must also take care of our faculty and staff. So that was some of the, the rationale behind how this program grew. We sent it back to Mr. Jones and now to continue on the foundation.
Thank you. Um, peer support, types of individuals intervention, or see the programs, intervention services have always been kind of the state of the care in law enforcement, fire, medical EMS. My take was, why not education? Ironically, when we get lumped into the category of being essential, I think this only fits that we create a program that, that does the same thing as some of these other professions that we look so highly in regard to. Next slide. So our goal, um, as I stated before, okay, to better equip our staff before we feel we have to intervene and assist our students in order to be best armed with the tools so that everybody involves benefits. So our, our teachers are taking care of each other, in turn, taking care of our students. Who are in turn being obviously taken care of and everybody, everybody ends up benefiting. So a little bit of the type of training, we use the SAFER model, which was created by Dr. Everly out of Johns Hopkins University. This is the same model that's used as I just stated with law enforcement, fire EMS, athletic training fields as well. The acronym obviously standing for stabilization, the acknowledgement, okay, both of the event and the reactions without minimization, facilitating the understanding, encouraging the effective coping mechanisms in regards to maybe possibly shifting perspectives in order to best assist the individual to look at things from a different angle. And while doing this with the basis that the studies have shown that most individuals after a crisis felt they weren't prepared. So my goal was if we put the program in place so that people know something is there when there's a time of need, a little bit of prevention might be, might be worth a large, large volume in regards to taking care of, of ourselves mentally, physically and emotionally.
Coach, I think your microphone is giving you a hard time. If you can, I'm having a hard time understanding you.
Great. I'm about four feet away from my screen right now. Is that better? So who is today, but now we have essentially every, every building and department within the district. Right now, buildings and grounds and our custodial staff are the last groups. Due to the, the different shifts, getting them together in one common, at one common time has been a challenge, but we are still, we are still getting, going to be getting them together to facilitate that. So who we are, um, four main purposes that we're going to focus on, you know, when we're dealing with this, obviously, is the health aspect. Making informed, healthy choices, both the physical, mental, the social, as well as allowing the purpose and motive to stay active for the individual fully as an educator. And then from a community aspect, to emphasize the relationships and the positive social networks to support friendship, care and hope. And we'll turn this next slide over to Janelle.
So I also want to share just in the context of schools, that the word crisis can be really a vague term. So I guess you could almost be synonymous with stressor. So any stressor that a faculty or staff member might bump into in the course of the day, it might be something that a Q Care's member is trained to address. So moving forward, how are our staff trained? Utilizing two to three, either in-person or virtual sessions conducted by Bob and myself. We reviewed the acronym, the SAFER model. We also reviewed training videos put out by the Athletic Training Governing Body. And we discussed real life scenarios, specifically COVID, that could pop up within the daily stress in the life of a teacher and how we might address them. During some of the training sessions, Bob and I modeled the importance of active listening and summary strategies for one another as good leadership to the program. Discussing empathy and connection and taking care of oneself in service to other peers. We really made sure that was an important aspect that we shared. So a lot of times during training, we would stop and talk about what that looks like to give them real life examples. So what does Q Care looks like? Well, some examples of the high school Q Care's program that were put together was that the Q Care's members decided to support staff by offering weekly office hours for a staff chat. So on Wednesdays, there's an open Google Meet after dismissal until about 2:45 that's hosted by one or more Q Care's members. Although it may not be related to a crisis, staff members might join a live meet to say hello, share a story, or just see how their peers are doing. Sometimes it's sharing tips about what's working well in the classroom in regards to instruction or technology. Or just seeing other people in the building that they normally wouldn't see throughout the course of the day. On the right-hand side, we also show a schedule of Q Care members and their free time during any given day. That way, if a peer wants to seek out a Q Care member, they can see when they're available for any needed support. So we've made it through the halfway mark of the school year and we wanted to gain some feedback from the Q Care's members themselves, but also from members from the K-12 staff that might interact with a Q Care member or may not know they're actually interacting with a Q Care's members. Because members are woven into the daily interactions of our school and they assist with checking in and kind of taking the pulse of the building's daily needs. Q Care's members reported in this slide that they're often doing check-ins with staff members at least once a week. And Q Care members reported that they've done at least one check-in this year in their respective buildings. A quote to kind of summarize how Q Care members feels about the program is that they do regular check-ins and they try to be good listeners for one another. Some feedback that we gained from the K-12 staff members who might interact with a Q Care's member is that 50% of those staff members who were aware they're approached by a Q Care's member, and that's an important piece, reported that they benefited from the check-ins, the follow-ups and the peer-to-peer interactions. This is the goal of our program, for it to become the culture and not necessarily part of a daily task. Asking simply how someone is doing and using active listening skills to lend a ear is probably the most powerful thing. Many times, our staff members do not want a Q Care's members to solve their problem. They just need someone to listen. Again, a faculty member wrote that it's nice to have someone they trust about, talk to someone about frustrations, concerns or fears. But the silver lining is also of the positives that are going on in the building. Thought this was very important, that balance is important and that faculty members are very grateful for their peers, for those interactions that they do get to have and the support that they receive. So I'm going to turn things back over to Mr. Jones as we talk about our action steps for the remainder of the school year and some things we would like to continue to work on and to do better.
Thank you, Janelle. One of the things I, I was, when we got the results of the studies are, what, what can we do better? One is definitely the increase in awareness in each building. And our goal was to have something monthly from each building team in order to best address possibly something going on in that building. Just as each department, each building has its own culture. It's tough to say that there's a one-size-fits-all blueprint for every building that will work for every, for every situation. The second one, the second one there, reviewing our, our, both our local and our state EAPs. Janelle and, and Amy have been great in throwing both of those out. Warren County Services as well is, is available and used as a referral when we go through the training and we guys do having the tools for the individuals. And then the last one is fostering the peer-to-peer interaction. When our goal is to make these interactions not school-related, so the individuals are able to relieve themselves of possibly what could be considered as one of these stressors, leading them to, to the situations that we're in. And there's a, a multitude of things going on, from my understanding, in, in each building that, that individuals are attempting to do in order to, to accomplish this. Janelle, do you have anything to add?
No, just really increasing awareness and fostering the peer-to-peer interactions. Staff have reported that they've enjoyed some of the programming that either Q Care's has done or a subcommittee has done in order to connect us when we feel so isolated sometimes in our classrooms and we're not having those social interactions that we very much miss. So looking to increase those as we move forward and, and continue to look at feedback from both Q Care's members and staff. Are there any questions?
This is Amy. I have a quick question. Is this something that started this past year with COVID or is it something that had been in place prior?
From my, from my understanding is there, there may have been something similar prior to. Well, when I recently took over for Kirsten Bergen as the K-12 Health Department Chair, one of my goals were to address the staff in order to create a trickle-down effect so that the students were best accommodated. So this is a kind of new in regards to, I think, the way this SAFER approach or, you know, there's a, you know, kind of a morph in regards to what's considered a rapid acronym for Mental Health First Aid as well. So it's relative, it's relatively new. Dr. Everly's program has been around for years, almost a couple of decades, if not more. And like I said, it's, it's the groundwork and the framework for a lot of peer-supported type programs.
Thanks, Amy. Any other questions from the board? I want to thank, thank you, Mr. Jones and Mrs. Sipowicz. Again, I was looking forward to this and I'm very pleased to to see the progress that you've made in some of the services that we can offer to the folks right here in, in the district. It's extremely important, particularly in these times, but in, in any times that obviously you have a, someone's ear that you can bend either in a positive way or a negative way and really can do nothing but help. So and again, as you said, it trickles down to helping the kids in the district. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to go to the next portion of the meeting, which is our open forum. So we know we asked participants who wish to speak during the first open forum to identify themselves verbally and the organization they represent. So we can recognize those folks. We ask you all speakers to identify the school-related matter topic to be discussed. And in order so we can do this smoothly, we do limit it to a maximum of 30 minutes with three minutes allotted to each speaker. So with that, do we have anyone that would like to address the Board of Education this evening? John, I'll rely on you because I only see a limited number of faces. Or Scott?
I do not see any John, do you?
No, Mr. Mannix, I don't see anybody unmuted.
Okay. Well, close the open forum and we do, will have one coming up at the end of the meeting. So if somebody does change their mind and wish to address the board, we'll have enough second open forum later. So we'll move on to business items. Mr. Widmore?
Recommend that the Board approve Business Item A, motion that Needham Risk Management Resource Group that Malcolm Buffalo be appointed the Asbestos Local Education Agency designee.
Great. Can I get a motion, please?
Don't move, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Second?
Second. Stacy.
Stacy, thank you, Stacy. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Recommend that the Board approve Business Consent Items B through Q.
Before we take a motion, are there any items in B through Q that any of the members of the board would like removed? Hearing none. Can I have a motion for Business Consent Items B through Q, please?
Don't move, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Stacy. All in favor of the Business Consent Items B through Q, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Business Consent Items B through Q passes. Educational items, Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Mannix. I recommend the Board move to approve Educational Item A. A motion to approve the following resolution. Resolve that the position of the current Director of Human Resources, Amy Georgiades, holding permanent school district administrator certification is hereby retitled as the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Recruitment and the defined administrative tenure area of Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Recruitment, retroactive to her initial date of appointment effective August 16th, 2004, with all benefits, rights and privileges previously accrued and hereby further resolve that the Board hereby approves a revised employment agreement for Ms. Georgiades, correcting the title and tenure area to Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Recruitment and hereby authorizes the Board President to execute such a revised employment agreement.
There'll be a, was there anything else you wanted to address, Mr. Gannon, at this time? Want to wait for?
I was going to have the, if the Board, if you would be comfortable with the Board acting, please. And then if I could, that'd be great.
Okay. Have a motion for Item A, please.
Don't move, Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Second, please, Joe?
Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Please, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Educational Consent Items B through F.
If, if I could, Mr. Mannix, about, or Josh, thank you. So
Yes, go ahead.
I really appreciate the Board and I really appreciate Ms. Georgiades both. The, she has, what she does for our district on a day-to-day basis and for our employees on a day-to-day basis is amazing. She is such a hard worker. I know the Board knows this. She's done such great things for our district and continues to be creative right now with employment pieces. Just find her to be a wealth of knowledge. She's a, a great teammate. And so I'm, I'm very thankful that the Board of Education agreed to do this. And this is really in response. This is not a salary increase. This is recognizing the efforts that she puts forth on a day-to-day basis. So I'm really, really thankful and congratulations to her and thank you to the Board of Education. I really appreciate it. So I recommend the Board move to approve Educational Consent Items B through F.
Okay, before we take a motion, are there any items in the Consent Items B through F that need to be removed? Okay, hearing none. Can I get a motion for, to approve the Educational Consent Items B through F, please?
Don't move.
Thank you, Tim. Second?
Second, this is Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Any, just, no discussion. All in favor of the Educational Consent Items B through F, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Okay, Board Committee reports. I think we had, uh, was it policy and safety or just safety that met? I'm not, I thought someone met.
Safety's met twice.
Okay. Anything to report to the Board?
Well, the first meeting, they basically, Rich kind of went over everything that they talked about at the Safety Committee meeting. They talked about COVID and they also talked about the asbestos and the asbestos management team is going to be going and running. I guess they've done some seminars and stuff where people can acquaint themselves with what the asbestos is. But it was quite informative. Lisa Tubbs gave a talk way back in December about the, uh, the COVID situation and Rich reiterated it tonight. And I think the most important thing is that there have been no student-to-student transfer, transfers of the, the virus while they're at school. And I guess we got the fire marshals, okay, that the, the school's okay. And then today, they, they introduced a new reporting for the individual faculty to kind of go over safety suggestions. There's a, more of a survey that they are going to introduce to them and they're going to take that. And that's about it.
Okay. Anybody else from the Safety Committee have anything? Okay. Uh, any other committees that met? I know we had some policy issues, but I'm not sure if the committee met or not. Or if they've been kind of meeting virtually or just with emails? Okay. All right. Board Member comments? Nothing going on? No Board Member comments? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our second open forum. Again, with the same ground rules and it's the first one. Is any member of the public that wishes to address the Board of Education? Okay. Nothing, Scott, or? Oh, okay. There's a series of informational items that don't need to be read. Just are, uh, Monday, the 18th, our Martin Luther King Day. And then we have a workshop, that'll be virtual, right? The workshop on the 25th? Okay. Okay, with nothing else to come before the Board, I'll, uh, we do have need for executive session, which we received a second link for. So can I have a motion to, uh, go out of this session and into executive session, please?
Don't move, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Was that you, Stacy?
Yes.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Well, thank you all for attending. Thank you, all the members of the public and administrative staff and faculty that attended. Thank you very much for, uh...
And can I ask, just to add, what's the, the reason for the executive?
I'm sorry, to deal with an, to deal with an employee issue. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. We'll see the rest of the Board in the executive session.